Quality testing. Mr. Metz, can we stand first and do the plan?
Yeah, me and Rob to plan.
Would you like?
You keep on rolling, you're good.
Oh goodness. So, Mr. Metz, if you would, water quality testing.
We did not get this monthly report from hours. I'm sure we received today or tomorrow when I do our grant. I'm sure that the last one for what was good. Alright, we did send out CCR reports in the mail along with other stuff that was in that packet. I'm hoping you all got it. We had some issues with the mailing and some people got blank envelopes for some reason. So, but didn't get any comments about it. So, everything must went pretty well with it.
I've not gotten any.
Did you?
Yeah.
Yeah, I got nothing. Oh, no, 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 I mean, I didn't get any comment from anybody.
Oh, no.
No one called or commented.
So, when you said they got blank envelopes, what do you mean by that?
They, there was just an envelope, nothing in it. It should have been CCR report or stuff. But the report is available here. They like to review it or city.
Alright, so the ARP discussion.
There's, I mean, it's bugging along. I think there's about a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars that we have not expended. A part of that is for the Twenty-Eight Streets Storm Drain Project, which was mostly, I believe, engineering. But we've been built for that. And the other was additional project for here. I can't remember what that last project was, which that's bad. Yeah, that, so it's all been appropriated, but it has not all been expended.
Right, but as long as it's appropriated, the timeline is not going to give us a problem.
No.
That's what we've been told. Alright. Alright, so we move on to the five-year plan. Are there any additions to the five-year plan or questions on?
Still going along the flow, working on a lot of projects. Mike's information today, that project got on our list of on run.
Alright, so then we move to the dredging of pond run and the dry dance.
You take that, Mike?
Yeah, um, we have given, well, they were calling sixty-five percent drawings, but everything is basically laid out. Just need to have my fishing touches on there. I know Russ and I were discussing, we, we need to provide him with a piece of balanced description of easements that we need for, for the mall property. So, we just want to make sure we get the correct owners and.
That'll be done in fairly short. Which is, the biggest holdup will be confirming that we have right owners.
Preference dredging plan, I know we talked about on run dredging, grass at all. Down to our outfall area. We've also talked dredging, the dry dance, the green mark, anything.
Yeah, it's awesome.
What's your, what did, and then the calculations removal for us?
I don't know if it's on the plans, but it should be. What did I expect?
Yeah, it's quite a bit. I know they go there quite a bit, so that's why I was wondering.
What do you consider quite good?
I'm thinking quite a five-foot fill in each one of those over the years. And I know even when the guys mow it now, it's just real, getting real dangerous to guys. Because well, this past time we mowed it, they was walking out, they'd find holes. They just go, grab air, drop straight down. So, I know it's about five, but they.
When was the last time that was done?
Huh?
When was the last time they were?
Then over twenty-seven years, because I've been here that long. And I don't think they stress. I don't think I've actually ever been.
The reason for my question was where the drains are that are there. I mean, how much of the drain is under the dirt now?
Well, the drains, they're only about a foot in the outfall, but it was belly. So, and that belly is where all your soil is. So, alright, because they're meant to hold some water dissipate. They're just shoot right straight, right toward the drains this time.
Well, my question, you know, I drive by there a lot.
Right.
And when I see that, you know, it looks like that, you know, the grass and all that is right up to the very edge of the inlet. You dig out five foot of dirt on that thing, you're going to have a substantial
Yeah.
holding area.
There'll be more back in the bowl area.
Now, does that has any environmental concern? Would you just remove that and utilize that dirt somewhere else?
I'm hoping mix in with leaves and kind of use it for topsoil. So, it's going to take some time to dry out. Same thing with the dirt removal down the kayak launch. I'm going to recycle that right up here and reuse it for field dirt. I know I'm shipped through and get some free allop, but I bet there's come off that area. I'm wanting to hold it up here. So, I know in the beds, there's, it's called for, laid off store. I'm going to send trucks down, haul, and get hauled up here. We're very low on topsoil and filter. We did this site over here, I took off so much topsoil stacked in the back, made a huge wind road. I thought, well, this is going to be for a lifetime. It's, it's out. I got maybe eight, ten truckloads left at that. So, so we try to, when our leaf pick up, we, we pin a pile and we try to cycle some dirt into that. Make composite compost and we're, leaf's not on it quick enough, of course. We use a lot, we use a lot of filter, a lot of topsoil.
You're done?
Yeah.
Okay. So, the next item is the RFQ for the engineering firms.
Yeah, that was a kind of paper last Thursday. Instructed, we were interested, dropped off so many pamphlets. We'll get together. I did the questionnaire, you all got a copy. And it's the same one we used, but you did. We all used back last time, back in two thousand and eleven. So, it's a pretty good format. Keep it, if you all want to change anything, you want to let me know, I'll change it. Once I get all the proposals in from the different engineering firms, then we'll probably sit and talk about it. Last time, I think we left a half an hour per company. So, if we get six engineering firms come in, you're going to, you're going to look at three hours for the time. Interview these firms. I know you all talked about one of the, last time there was one of those myself. Miracle, Rich Rogers, and then they had five. You know what you're going to do? So, ask me people and the recommendations or if you can.
It's a, it's a sound stuff.
Yeah.
Do we have a record?
I don't. Yeah. It's a long time, Seth. So, I, I'm just going to help you guys out, but you all do what you want. If you want to do it, meeting, so be it.
For anybody that's never done this before, it's the same set of questions for every one of the two. So, after about the second one, it gets a little tea, but that's neither here nor there.
Yeah.
They should see.
Yeah. If you all want a committee, three to four people, people on the board and myself, then.
Hold on, how many people are on our board? Five, can't have three people on the board. You'd have two, you have three. Unless, well, let me rephrase that. You can't have three people on the board, on the utility board unless you notice it. And make it an open meeting.
Can we have two board members and a council member?
As long as that, yeah, I don't think that's an issue. As long as the council, yeah, that'd be fine. Yeah. As long as it's not a council member.
You would be on that, right?
Yeah.
You would be on that. I would like you to be on that, to get it that fashion. I would like you to be on that, and I would suggest Rod be on that, if he's willing.
And one of the things I would definitely consider, if you have a new matrix, and I think, yeah, is I think geography is important. Because one of the things, okay, because I can't remember.
If we were to do that, would you be willing to do that?
I know, I've looked at it, I can't remember. I just want to remind it while, like, while I'm thinking.
Yeah, because this is the very first for us.
So, can I make a motion to form that little committee?
I don't think you need to. I mean, you can if you want to, but I.
Are you willing to do that meeting?
Mr. Leach, are you still with us?
Got really quiet.
Yes, I am.
So, have you heard the conversation about the formation of this committee?
Yes.
Are you in agreement with that?
Yeah, I think it makes sense.
What have you want?
So, do you? Mr. Metz and Rod. Smith?
Do you want one more?
We need one more. You always have an odd number.
It is an odd.
However you want to do it, just have an odd number.
Alright.
That's one point, said doesn't really matter. Well, that's a solid, yeah, because you're not really voting.
I would do.
Unfortunate, because you're not voting, you're, you're tabulating.
Right. The three is fine, reasonable. Alright. Will that work for you? Alright, thank you, Rod, and thank you. Appreciate that. Look, you guys pick the day and I will buy your month.
And breakfast. That's a long meeting.
I'm sensing hot vote.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we know how soon we're going to start this?
They got fifteen, eighteen.
So, it'll be sometime.
I've got everything you have. Get with you all.
See what your time schedule looks like. See what, Rod, how much time Rod's available and what have. Yeah, but he's got a golf schedule. I mean, he's champion.
That's what you want to schedule, is that what you're saying?
Well, you know.
Hold on, so who are going to be the members of this board? One, two.
Craig, Rod.
Now, I think you need to have another person that's from the utility. Rod can be on it.
Doesn't matter.
Because we are doing this not for the city, we're doing this for.
Do you have that, it'll take like three hours?
Yeah. And that will be here? Okay. I knew, I knew the answer to that before I asked it, just for you. Yeah. Alright, that concludes our agenda for unfinished businesses. Or anything else that needs to be done before we move to new business? Alright, then new business, rate study.
Alright. Been waiting for this one, so we all got your reports. Our county firm about rate structures and what's up there. Sure we all read it detail. Those every number to the limit pages. So, keep everything over. Outside, how you want to see. What to use. Rate, this is what's on there.
So, basically, you know, your, your options are how you implement the rates and if you are on board with the projects that the rates are being set for. Those are your basic options. This is the correct process for doing this. Your projects, you set your rates, and then you go out to the bond market. And so, this ensures that you don't have a future problem with your bond grading. And because every bond, you have to, you have to have a certain amount of revenue over and above. I think it's usually fifteen percent, hundred and fifteen percent. So, this ensures that you don't get into a problem with your rate covenants by doing the correct process. If you look rates, Vienna, prior to the rate increases, the cheapest water company in the state. That's out of three hundred and twenty-eight water companies. After this will go to its final projection for the sixth. Seward, Vienna, I believe it was Oregon, cheapest in the state for Seward. And after the rates are set, we would put one, three, four, five, keep this up. Still, well, below the midline for all of them. But this is the way, this is the way you upgrade infrastructure. And those are tough to fight off on the public, but it has to be done. If, if you want to upgrade your infrastructure, this is the process to do it. Currently, you know, our current rate wants more than buying a piece of. They're there mainly because we have that rate covenant effects on what's in the current cap. It's rotation on any of the debt would affect that great covenant and we would be in on clients. That's, is anybody have questions? I, you know, the thing that you can do, and Craig and I have talked, we can go back to Michael Griffith. We felt like way out of the break to ask them for, to further step the rates so that they are, you know, maybe more palatable for people. But we also have to make sure when we do steps, that the projects. So.
So, the, the two options are, one, get it all out the gate. Two, do a step system over the course of the next three years. I am personally more in favor of doing that than pulling out stops and just hitting everybody up. I understand and I believe it's the overall opinion of council that we recognize that we have to do something, but we want to do it in a managed way that doesn't impact our community in one big hit. Is this something we're deciding today?
I think you should decide if we're going to do a step program. My first, you all, you should see what it.
Yeah, whatever you hear, then you're. Ultimately, I think you need to have an agenda, ultimately council has to approve. They're the, they're the desires.
This is just, this is just first step in that process. Say, hey, this is what I'd like to do, like to step this in.
Craig, I know we have the five-year study. I might overlook it on all this paperwork here. Do you have the projects listed somewhere, like spreadsheet?
We do.
I think that'd be helpful to show projects to the public to know what we're looking at.
Next meeting, Michael, if he gets it done, I spread them out for the next few years.
Yes.
Helped you all. And, and also if you all approve them, we'll take it to council also. What rates are going to be for each project?
The addition to that is, I knew last time, several years ago, publicly, it's always invited to our meetings. Did they have other comments? They comment on the rates recommended? We had a big chart last time, our presentation, that that would be done again now.
Right. Yeah, I think, I think. This is in force main, this is the purpose of, this is the main line, Brad, this is Laura.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We need to make sure that we have our, our, I guess, budget, capital numbers and population. Should be, I believe our numbers haven't gone down. We were, we met those threshold requirements last time. We can take that act, we still qualify. Just make sure that we're still exemplary, yes, see.
So, are we in a position today to make a decision on this?
I think what you recommend to me is the fact that we're asking to make some, three, four years.
Do I need to make a motion on that?
No, I think you could, today is just discussion. I think sent Craig out with the direction, I would agenda for the next. When I agenda, when this is agenda for approval, it's to agenda to, agenda into something like for the base plan. Water and Seward rate increase, so it's clear, right now you just, I would read it right.
Jim, do you have any thoughts on that? Or are you okay with that?
No, and I mean, quite honestly, I haven't been able to hear clearly everything, but I get the gist of it. Uh, so, no, I don't.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, we're going to make a recommendation that Craig get a rate plan that would be tiered over three years. Bring that together, then we'll agenda that and bring that to council.
And again, I heard that goes to Michael Griffith, right? For the structure. Same guy we used before?
Yes. Yeah.
No, go ahead. Okay, yeah, no, I don't have any questions.
I don't know that you're allowed really any input on this. I appreciate, your time will come at council meeting. Is there any other discussion on that?
I, my, I have just a question. Just in general, is it going to cost us more if Michael Griffith does, airs a proposal, doing a staged, doing that phased rate increase and doing it all?
We're like engineers and lawyers.
So, yes, the answer is yes. Okay, and then, that's the main question. Don't waste the money if you're, if you're implications.
Well, I think, I think we all agreed it, three years. And I think that's what most utilities are doing, even our company, gas company. I'm sure you all.
I gotta step out real quick. Rod, while I'm going, you'd like to make your comment.
Yeah, the issue that Rod, two that are getting outside. We tried to be up to the next three years. At that point, I wasn't pushing anything with rate, rate, but I guess if you're next, rate study is the next part. Alright, Mike?
You have to get the cash in hand, you have to get the cash in hand for rates.
It's like borrowing a car, if you don't have a job, you're going to borrow it from somebody. However, you probably got a house, or at least ten years. You got a house. That's crazy. I imagine. The other reason I, I brought up, making sure they go better. Statue of Waters, not less than two or three. So, I don't think it's an issue. Sure. Not for utility. To be honest. Yeah, for the mayor.
You, you think definitely.
True. Yeah, you mean the people, don't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. I like sharing my misery.
Yeah. If yours are so fun anyway.
So, based on your correction, are you saying we need to add someone?
No, we have, we have, we have three, we have a minimum.
Because Mike. Okay, alright.
Michael, you, and Craig, and Rod. Since it's only the two of you who actually would, would probably, you can do this without having a public meeting. If you were to add some Joe, we have to do this. So, we have now these two, Mr. Metz and Mr. Smith. You can, you can, you can always have, make it a public meeting.
Well, I mean, it doesn't make any difference whether you make a public meeting or not. Public is not allowed to speak.
That's correct.
So, they're observers only.
And they're not, they're not.
You can, that, that's irrelevant.
No, but we had issues in the past for individuals, so they should be attending some of these meetings. And we just want to make it clear, it's a public meeting, you can't give anybody. It's not a public meeting, and it's up to discretion. Whomever it is, it's charged. Or don't allow people to attend, or, I don't care. Just pick one, just want to do it. There are advantages and disadvantages.
You're going to take care of all that?
And then we have to do, we have to do the last two. And then we have to do, we have to do last two. Let me, let me go through and make sure we're okay on the process. Because it's been a while since I've, you're fine. Just trying to remember. Yeah, the solicitor, yeah, you've just had the solicitation. That's, no, 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 you're fine. I was just making sure. I know, right?
Well, you know.
It was way too.
Yeah. Yeah, they cost extra. Just here to make sure things aligns well.
So, when this is all done, if we're going to change the way that we operate, we have to change our paperwork with the Public Service Commission. Well, we're going to do a three, three-year step increase, which is different, okay? Will that affect our tariffs? This is, this is kind of stupid. But because tariffs are such a major headline news thing nowadays, we need to make sure that we explain to the public that our tariff is not charging water from people in wherever.
Yeah.
Okay?
Well, we will, though. We'll charge you twenty percent next year.
Well, you know, I'm sorry Chad left early because I'm telling you, one of the worst things that happens on these things is, it, it doesn't matter when you go and you say, okay, we're going to raise your water rates three dollars and your sewer rate's going to go up three times that. It's going to come out in the paper that we're raising water rates thirty-seven percent. It's the percentage that kills you. It's, it's a dollar amount.
Yeah.
Okay?
Good point. Yeah, last time, back up. I advise you all, you, uh, twenty-five percent are, it's a lot less than. So, people see the percentage, should see the true dollar amount. Change, I do not like these percentages.
Just sounds worse. Just, yeah.
It, it should use.
I agree, that's what they look at, percentage. They look.
Yeah, it's not true percentage. Twenty-five percent of our square foot rates. You know, rates is, it doesn't, so we hear since, as you tell, cheated the basic companies. If we, you know, first learned, you know, we lost that portion lower. Twenty-five percent of our rate increases, not that, the name close to that. I would use a dollar figure.
But even after the rate increase, we're still lower than the area's rate.
And Williamson is, is, yeah. Rate increase awesome.
You can go on the police service station website, and you just scroll down on the left-hand side, and it'll say, since rates are based on forty-five, thirty. You can go to the water pay, you can count, hit this, you. State. State shows you.
Okay. Wait till next meeting to officially start it, right? Can we get that in time, maybe?
I don't think there's any problem.
Okay.
It's, I need to relieve.
You, you're going to review the rate structure? Can we get someone besides the local state president to verify that?
At least in the football games.
Oh. Moving right along. Managers report.
I think we want to.
Everybody went along with it. That tracks.
That's right.
Managers report.
I don't know what to talk about. You may make something pretty lost. Not, not much going on. We did our valve replacement. We did four valve replacements really well. Continue one night repair within the month of October, after this month. Got some injuries going on with a couple employees, not related, but, so, we get a full staff back. Overplace. Uh, the first month in October, we will be fleshing hydrants. So, let's have a line. Where I shut up. Fortunately, I didn't like coming start, I was beating. That's where I find you off every. We also got well, we also got back the complex up here. And we purchased this complex and since it's. We bought it, and then we could grow up here and have up and growing, which has. Partly a building being constructed out back is a twenty-four by one, or building construction. Uh, that is for joint ownership or joint use for the property public and other parts. This preparation. Roundhouse or. We're impressed with the guys working out there. I've done, they've been there for this, the group day. Amazing group of guys doing that, uh, structure out there. Stuff rolls in and guys are satisfied, guys. I got a pile scrap out there. That way around. But it's just material to put that shit in, right? Wood scrap, uh, nice to see if a contractor comes in. Excellent job, so, that's a good chance, uh, it should be done. Be a Friday or Tuesday or Thursday, outside, more time. A contractor, one. Service inside. It makes it a nice place. And that building, that's designed to, we want to add another hundred and fifty-four feet to it. Building. So, yeah. Link with current Rob's complex at seven eighty. Line. The building colors. Got some bade in the years that are not going to be perfect. I'm going to turn it off. Questions or anything?
Just one. I'm not complaining, okay? But all of that junk that you got laying out there, all the cars and trucks and all that business, have we made it? I know. I know.
I've moved it three times now. That's a lot of equipment when you move and you drag it.
Maybe you seem to be inheriting stuff from.
I am.
All over.
It seems to be the junkyard of the cities. We refer to it as a secure location.
Yeah.
I said, what? A secure location.
Hopefully we can auction off. The rule of good times auction right now, because some of that equipment is still.
You kind of lost your threshold on the low end.
Yeah, but you know, it, it's, it's such a cumbersome system for Amy to have to go do that. All right, I mean.
The issue we're having is just simply, uh, some folks want, want us to do it live auction or go their service. We have a method, we have a system in place that's working for us. It doesn't cost the city money. We have other, we have other individuals that want us to use a different service. So we just realistically, this is making a decision.
Yeah, but I, I think we're of the opinion, and I voice this opinion, if we sell something, whatever service we go with, if I sell that bottle for a hundred dollars, city gets a hundred dollars. Not that the city gets seventy-five cents, because the rest of it went out with fees and taxes, but that we get the full sale price of that. So the, the challenge, or the challenge on that was, you know, don't use this service, use these other services. And while we do want to support a hundred percent local businesses, we also have to make the best decision that gets Vienna the most money for the equipment that we're selling. And unless we find somebody that says, you know, we are too willing to pass all of our fees and those various things on to the buyer, and the city gets a hundred dollars out of the bottle when it sells it for a hundred. I mean, it's, it's pretty clear fiscally responsibly what we're supposed to, we're supposed to do. But we have chased that rabbit to death at this point. And I would say in the next thirty days, we'll have a result.
We'll make a decision on.
Yeah.
What we do. And we'll bring it to council.
Well, I've been following that in the paper. There is some miscommunication coming out of these auctioneers. It'd say, hey, we're as cheap as anybody. That is not true. Okay, you're absolutely right. Bottom line is, how much money do we get out of that surplus of equipment?
And I want to support local business, but I'm not going, I can't do it at the cost of costing the city money. That's just not, that just doesn't pass the common sense test.
Well, you can't subsidize. Just for a, may a business.
I think we're still on managers.
That's it. Our pursuit, very important because when somebody, of course, we have a backlog staked off, like. Has been down, it's probably, they are going to look at work, stake off that, discuss some issues. Yeah, so, also have to project first day.
We went through budget and finance last night, that issue.
Contact, start Monday. Y'all more about, now looking, I, for location is, Tommy's taking off horse. Cuts and fills on it, so.
There is optimism in the state that they will up that source. I think so, then. We'll have to cover all of the backend that. Except for twenty, set back from. We're figuring, if they do that, we're looking at about ten thousand dollars, which is pretty big.
That's it.
No?
Nothing here.
Michael?
No, sir.
That's it, sir.
Russell? Okay, great. Jim? Hello, Jim?
All right, yeah, I'm here. I had you on mute.
That's okay. We're, we're, we're finished. Do you have anything else for Craig?
I don't. The, um, I listened to the conversation on the betting stuff, but I agree with what the mayor was saying, so, otherwise, I'm good.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Well, if there's nothing else, then, you adjourned.